Call the meeting to order, those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and place releases, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this fair and good living, and forgive us our trespasses, and to give you your love as you trust us against us. In which thou shalt not be tempted, but thou shalt see it. For thy eyes have seen the power and glory of her. By thy nations, to the land, and to the nations of America, and to the republic with whose justice stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with their feet in justice for all.
Entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 21st, 2015. Second? Any discussion, changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 5th, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All those in favor of the minutes, uh, for May 5th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes approved. Approve the open work session minutes from May 5th, 2015.
So moved.
Second? Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, work session minutes have been approved. Now, at this time, we have a proclamation on the agenda. It's one that's special to me because I used to be a member of this organization. I used to be, uh, I'm a past president, actually, of the Salisbury J.C.'s. And, uh, of course, that was back in the Stone Age. But I'm glad to see they're still going strong, and probably even stronger than they were when John, you and I were in it. John Hall was actually the person that asked me to join the J.C.'s. I took a year to do it. And, uh, and never missed it, you know, regretted that I hadn't done it sooner. So, uh, we're gonna go over to the podium if you don't mind. Whereas the Salisbury J.C.'s was recognized as one of the top ten chapters in the country by the group's U.S. parent organization, JCI USA, and was presented with the Clarence H. Howard Memorial Award. And whereas in 2014, the Salisbury J.C.'s ran forty-two projects, which included the traditional community projects of Treat Street Safe Halloween Trick or Treating Initiative, the Salisbury Christmas Parade, Children's Christmas Shopping Tour. And whereas the Salisbury J.C.'s also had fundraisers in other counties, such as the Soft Shell Metric Century Bicycle Ride. That's a good one. And that was the bicycle ride in Somerset County, and participated in many events, such as Pork in the Park, Third Friday, Furtland Easter Parade, and Salisbury University's Volunteer Fair. And whereas the Salisbury J.C.'s truly go above and beyond to help the community and make it a better place in which to live, without the many members of the J.C.'s donating their time and dedication to Wycomico County, these events would not be possible. And whereas the Salisbury J.C.'s is a great group of young people who are truly dedicated to making the community a better place for all involved, therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates the Salisbury J.C.'s and encourages all citizens of Wycomico County to congratulate the Salisbury J.C.'s for all their hard work and dedication, signed by the members of the county council. So, congratulations, and, um, I know you'd like to speak, 'cause that's part of what the J.C.'s is about, right? It's community service, but then it's also, uh, leadership, uh, as well as, uh, leadership training.
Yes. Thank you for having us here today. It's truly an honor, and, uh, couldn't have done it without the rest of our, our group. We're a group of about fifty, uh, young professionals, between eighteen and forty. Last year was a great year. We, again, ran about forty-two projects. Uh, we're always out in the public eye. Um, a lot of us do aspire to be, uh, representatives like yourself, Mr. Hall, Mr. Cannon. Um, but one day, maybe I'll, I'll be in your shoes, who knows? But, uh, wanted to thank Emily, of course, as our president last year. Sometimes you reap the benefits of, of the years past, and hopefully to continue doing that this year, as we have planned at least forty-two projects. I haven't kept count yet, but, uh, we had a busy meeting last night, and we got more projects to come this year. So, uh, again, I just wanna thank you all and, uh, look forward to another successful year. Thank you.
Let us know who you are and your title.
Emily Nock. I am the current chairman of the board, and I also serve on the state board as membership vice president.
Jessica Kling. I'm currently director-at-large, and I'm the seventy-fourth president.
I'm Kristy Johnson. I'm currently the VP of Management.
One more thing. This is gonna be our seventy-fifth year. Uh, we have a big celebration planned. Uh, what was the date of that?
October 3rd.
October the 3rd, so, uh, we expect Mr. Hall, Mr. Cannon, and the president for that. So, uh, we'll, we'll send you out the invite, but, uh, anybody you know from eighteen to forty that's looking to get involved in our community, we'd love to have you. So, thank you again.
I think we have a council meeting that day, but we can always postpone. At this time, um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn at the legislative session so that we can reconvene as the Urban Service Commission.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now, uh, we'll convene as the Urban Service Commission. Entertain a motion, uh, to introduce Resolution Two dash two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion, I believe there may be representatives here, either from the county or from the Salvation Army.
Good morning. It is my understanding that the procedures began in two thousand and eleven, where the billing for the Salvation Army would come to the county.
Right.
And the county would pay the bill, and then, in return, would bill the Salvation Army, and they would reimburse the county. That worked fine until we received, um, for the first quarter, for the first quarter in calendar year two thousand and fourteen, a bill that was over eight thousand dollars, which was not the norm. Normally, bills have been usually less than a thousand. The county filed up procedures, they paid the bill, they contacted Salvation Army asking for a repair or some explanation to why the water bill was so large. Um, the Salvation Army said there, they had, they did not see any problem, they couldn't, they didn't understand, they thought maybe it was a meter problem. Susan called the city, and to the state, it has not been resolved. No one has an explanation of why the bill was so large.
So, so the county's already paid the eight thousand bucks?
They have.
Yes.
And then, so, the Salvation Army would like us to not recoup that cost from them? Is that what they're asking?
And what we would like to see is the city to do, to adjust the bill, because obviously there was an issue. They've never had an eight thousand bill, uh, anywhere close to that amount in the past.
Did the Salvation Army approach them about that?
Yes.
Did the Salvation Army approach them?
We have approached them, and in the interim, they changed accountants and trying to get everybody under the understanding of the process. It's been a hard communication process.
Well, um, usually what you would do would be to appeal to the city for an adjustment.
Yes.
And, and evaluating that adjustment, they have to make a decision as to whether the water, the overage, was an overage that actually, to differentiate between whether the overage was a pipe that may have burst.
Right.
Or whether it's water that actually went, you know, through the sink or the toilet, and actually, uh, left that building and then went to the wastewater treatment plant. And if the water didn't go to the wastewater treatment plant, if the Salvation Army can prove the fact that it was a broken pipe where the water went out on the ground, then the city can forgive that. But they, they need to know those details, and I didn't see any statements to that effect here.
No, that had... That's what we've been waiting to hear from Salvation Army, but I did get something from the city. And on April 1st of fourteen, apparently T.E. Smith went out there, the property paperwork at, is in somebody's office, I wasn't able to find that out yet, and said he can't remember if the leak was inside or out. And nobody has followed through on the paperwork to let us know. So I have contacted Smith's office to see what they have.
Yeah, eight thousand dollars is a lot. So it was obvious that there was a leak.
From this comment or on the city's paperwork, that's what it sounds like.
I guess my question would be, why did we change from the Salvation Army just paying the city to coming to us and then we paying the city? Why was that done?
The county, um, being the county owns the property.
Uh-huh.
That was one reason, but another reason was, as a courteous, being courteous to the Salvation Army, they were behind on their previous bills.
So that's why the county, that was a previous finance director's decision to tell them to allow the county... So they hadn't been paying their previous bills?
Yeah, they were behind on their previous bills.
Were those ever paid?
Yes, they're, they've been paying it every day except for this eight thousand dollars.
My knowledge, the city will not bill the tenant. They only bill the owner. And we're in, the county's the owner. Okay. So we have to recoup it from them? Yeah, I see, okay. So I guess that this eight thousand that's being asked to be forgiven is for that one incident, um, but they're, they're, they have paid up on all their other bills except for the eight thousand?
They've, they've paid up on all their other bills, but this eight thousand dollars, that's outstanding.
But I, I don't think at this point we're gonna stop still trying to follow through to see if we can recoup the eight thousand dollars the county could recoup.
Yeah, it may be a little premature to make this decision right now, because, I mean, there's two issues here, um, not only, first you have to find out what happened, and I think we really need to know what the cities, the cities will, will do for this.
Would it be appropriate to table this, uh, for the time being, until we get all the, all the facts, and then we come back and revisit it?
Motion table, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried? Table. Thank you all for coming in. Entertain a motion to adjourn as the Urban Service Commission reconvened as Wycomico County Council?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Urban Service Commission has been reconvened. That would leave it up to you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the county council, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
First item on the council's agenda today is an update from the Economic Development Director, Dave Ryan, from Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development. Mr. Ryan is here, and so is, uh, is...
Can I bring guests?
Sure.
Mr. Moore?
We didn't have him on the agenda, Dave.
Mr. Moore, Mr. Allen.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
You didn't tell us you were gonna bring such distinguished guests.
Right, well, I do have one, and I appreciate, uh, I appreciate these guys, uh, partnership. Bob Moore is the immediate past president of, of SWET, he's a local CPA in town, and John Allen is the less enviable position, perhaps, as the current president of, uh, our, our group, and he's with, uh, Marva, and we appreciate that. If we had some technical difficulties, I had intended to, uh, talk a little bit about the economy in terms of employment and jobs and, and the housing market. Um, but, uh, you know, if a picture's worth a thousand words, and I had thirty slides, then I'm not sure we all wanna go all of those words, but, uh, you know, basically, right now, we saw a run-up of job creation and employment, uh, beginning of the recession, and we saw that downturn at the, on the other side of the recession. And many of those jobs, it cuts across all sectors, many of those jobs were, though, heavily related to the construction sector, the business services, professional business services sector, both on the upside and, and also on, on the downside. Housing plays a big role in, in our employment on the lower shore, and, and that chart would have demonstrated that, where we've seen median prices flatten out right now, um, a significant downturn in residential construction occurring right about two thousand and six or so, uh, two thousand and seven, and it's maintained relatively flat at that point. Um, the, and we need to see rising prices, what we need, so to encourage more new construction. The good news is, the new home, uh, home sales are, are increasing, and inventory continues to, to decline, and, and that has to happen. You have to reduce the supply in order to, to gain the prices. So, the median, it would like, uh, look like a bell curve, uh, elongated bell curve, if you will. So I think we're moving in the right direction, still a very tepid market out there, very cautiously optimistic market in terms of employment and in terms of the housing sector. Um, the other thing I wanna talk about was, since Governor Hogan, and maybe the last time I've been in here, has taken office and, uh, announced his secretary, Mike Gill, as the Department of Business and Economic Development Secretary, and they've reached out in, in a very large way to us since they've been in office, and even before Mike was confirmed with the Labanaw announcement earlier this year. And make no mistake, there's not a day that goes by in which we're not heavily involved in that transition of the Labanaw. I just wanted to, uh, make, make, make that very, very clear. Um, but even during that time, before they were, uh, confirmed, his team reached out and offered to, to help in partnership, and, and that's been a terrific, and we think we reciprocate that, that partnership with the state. And we've joined the state on various trade events, whether it's through the USIAF, which is a Indian investor delegation, we were able to address and participate and present to a couple of months back, or Defense Show and Photonics Show in Baltimore, and, um, various other collateral material, were able to provide the state at various trade shows that, that they attend, that I think can translate into new business opportunities for us going forward. We were in a few months back, or a couple, a couple of months back, I think, on the entrepreneurship, and, and I still believe, and we still think that is, that is, can really sustain us going forward, and, and it's sustained us in a way, in our history too. I mean, we can go back to the founding of Purdue, or the founding of KNL, and, and see the spinoffs and, and the industries that have developed from those entrepreneurial efforts. Um, on a side note, you may have seen it, CBS, uh, this morning, I think, did a, a segment on Doctronics Corporation headquartered in Brookings, South Dakota, population twenty-two thousand. And they were one of the world's leading suppliers of Jumbotron scoreboards. They did Jacksonville, they did the University of Phoenix Stadium at the Super Bowl, and, uh, joined the Atlanta Dome as we speak. And why Brookings? And why twenty-two thousand in South Dakota? And two professors were roaming the halls of South Dakota State years ago, and they, they came up with a product, and it was a wrestling scoreboard at Black Triangle with lights on three sides, you see on the wrestling mats, and that evolved into this, um, large manufacturer and engineering firm called Doctronics. And at the time they started, twenty-two percent of the students stayed in South Dakota, and now, now sixty-five percent of the engineering students stay in South Dakota. And I mention that only because I think that's a, that's a terrific model for us going forward. The more we can collaborate and grow organically, the more we can... I'm out with County Executive Culver, Mr. Strausberg, very frequently these days, visiting companies, visiting, uh, our partners in the educational community on, on how can we encourage new innovation? How can we encourage new technology and new business formations? How can we grow that right here? And I think that, that's, uh, an effort that will continue, and you'll see us revamp our message, uh, marketing messages as, as we go forward.
Just any new incentives from, on the state level as far as, at least for...
Maybe, maybe, I don't, I don't think incentives would be the, the, the right terminology, but passion would be a terrific word. We see a, a great deal of passion on, on Governor Hogan and, and the team at the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development. I've been here a long time, and, and some say that's good, some say it's not so good, but, but, but the reality is, we've seen lots of different, uh, administrations over the years, lots of different, um, outreach programs, and, and this team is dynamite. They, they, they're, they're, they're super responsive. We, we trust, we reciprocate as well. Uh, but we've, uh, we're inviting Mike Gill, the secretary down, uh, with my colleagues in the neighboring counties, and, uh, to show us, show him Wycomico County, to show his team members Wycomico County. They don't always see that in Baltimore or, or in Annapolis. To show them the assets that we have, the facilities we have, the marketplace in which we operate, which we live, which we compete, uh, so we look forward to, to that opportunity. But yes, definitely, uh, a very proactive approach, uh, by, by the Governor Hogan's team. And he was in, Mr. Holloway, uh, at, at Greer Salisbury a couple, month or so ago.
Sure.
A pretty, uh, optimistic and ambitious guy.
The city of Salisbury's taken a lot of initiative, which, you know, we all appreciate. Um, a lot of what the county, how the county succeeds depends on how the, uh, the municipality succeed, to be quite honest with you, um, or the local towns. And I was wondering if, uh, if you anticipate, if there's anything that the county, from the county's perspective, what we should anticipate to partner with any of the local municipalities?
Along with the county executive's office, we're, we're exploring those opportunities within the city, especially in the downtown area, but also other areas of the county, which not just, not just here, that we're, we need to be and we want to be responsive to. Um, so, in terms of entrepreneurship, are there other funding mechanisms that we can pursue? Are there other incentives that, that, that we might be able to pursue to encourage new business formations here? And I really think, uh, we will have some success. We will recruit companies here and, uh, over the years, but to really sustain us, to, to really, um, churn out new business formations, day in, day out, in the future, I think entrepreneurial opportunities in growing organically. And it's not just, when I say that, sometimes people think it's just app development and things like that, but as Doctronics, the story can, can be mindful of, it's not always that. We'll see new opportunities in, in manufacturing products as well.
Questions on council? I know, uh, I attended two of the three days at Salisbury University... Larry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I can wait for you.
Go ahead. They, um, I, I attended two of the three days at Salisbury University when they were doing their entrepreneurship with the Bernstein and the Shark Tank, and what was the third one, the...
Sure Hatchery.
Sure Hatchery. And, and I was very impressed on how many people actually came there to promote their businesses. They had two hundred and fifty people that showed up from a larger region, not just Salisbury. Uh, what I was very impressed with was that Kathleen McLean from Channel Forty-Seven actually prepared a packet for these individuals, uh, which told them why they should grow their business in Wycomico County. So I was very, didn't, not necessary to do that, but I was really glad to see that that was, that, that initiative was taken.
Right, and we appreciate Kathleen, um, um, we participated in that package.
Yeah, yeah, you're responsible.
We welcomed that opportunity with Kathleen, that, and she gave us that opportunity, so we appreciate that.
Larry?
Mr. Ryan, Dave, um, I appreciate you being here today and, um, giving us an update on this, and, uh, as an elected official, one thing that we hear many times over and over again is jobs. And the way to get jobs is to create business or to drive industry to Wycomico County. I appreciate what you do, um, and I know you work hard every day with, at that. And, um, it's nice that you're here today. I, I personally would like to see, um, you here more often to give us updates, 'cause the, the public likes what you do, and they wanna know what you're doing and what's going on in the county, so thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Dodd, and, and look no further than here. I'm probably, I'm lousy at, at telling us, uh, what we do, I think, sometimes, and, uh, we, we can do better with that, and we're, we're trying to do that. At the same time, um, focus on our mission and, uh, um, so, but we will, we will reach out, uh, more often.
Should there be a, a blue panel commission or some group, uh, that would take some, an initiative as far as, uh, trying to assist you in anything?
We have...
Especially in evaluating the entrepreneur...
Oh, no, well, I, I think, we, we have lots of partners out there. Um, you know, we participated in, in a large way with the, the SU, um, entrepreneurial competitions. Um, we work closely with Mr. Culver, and he's been, you know, terrific to, to work with. Again, we're out visiting lots of companies, uh, almost every week, trying to uncover opportunities. Um, so, we feel like we have a lot of partnerships, but if anybody has any great ideas, we're, 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 we're fairly humble in that, in that respect.
Well, that's what these guys here...
That's what these guys, yeah, they, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thanks for having us.
Some of those companies that you're visiting are, are you saying that they might be planning on leaving?
Anyone else have a question? No. No, sir.
I wouldn't want to hear that.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much.
Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number Seventy-Four, two thousand and fifteen, extending the date for the adoption of the annual budget and appropriation bill from June one to June second. The county charter requires that the county council adopt a budget by June the first. The council charter also gives the county council the authority to pass a resolution to extend the date. June the second is your next regularly scheduled meeting. By extending the budget adoption one day, it will avoid having to, we'll have a special meeting just for that purpose. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Entertain a motion... You have a motion. Excuse me? You have a motion. Entertain a motion to accept Resolution Seventy-Four, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
I would like to discuss it. Um, this is one of the first budgets in a long time that I have, um, been able to support. Unfortunately, I'm gonna have a medical procedure done, um, a couple of days before that, a few days before that, so I will not be in attendance to vote on that. And, um, I did want the, um, public to know that I am in support of the budget as it stands now. If you guys don't change it before I...
In the meantime, when I... But anyway, um, I do support the budget as it's done now, um, and I hope there's enough votes here to support it, so, anyway, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor of Resolution Seventy-Four, two thousand and fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried, resolution passes.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number Seventy-Five, two thousand and fifteen, at the request of the executive, to appoint the board of managers for various public drainage associations within Wycomico County. The annotated code provides and authorizes the formation of public drainage associations as political subdivision of the state, antibiotic politic, and corporate. And the, uh, state code also authorizes and directs the county commissioners, in our case, the county executive and county council, to appoint a personnel persons to the board of managers for the ensuing year, when an annual meeting has not been called, or when there was not a quorum present for an annual meeting. Therefore, the county council is faced with a recommended list of managers for the respective public drainage associations, which I will read as follows. Alan, Ellen G. Gray, George A. Whitney, David Quick, Idlet, Sid Richardson, Bruce Lewis, Richard Layfield, Beaver Dam, Arden Hickman, Quentin Riley, George Bradford, Dividing Creek, Stanley Brown, John, Don, Donald Culver, excuse me, Jimmy Johnson, Givens, Lloyd B. Brittingham, Gay, Gary Brittingham, and Robert Davis, Green Branch, Pete Richardson, J.D. Ireland, Bud Hudson, Head of Creek, Harrison Langler, Dale Massey, Horsebridge, Larry First, Raymond Atkins, Ju, Warren Purdue, and Tom Johnson, Laws, Robert Davis, Joe Dorick, Ben Brittingham, Mill Branch, Frank Ensco, David Kenny, Donna Inslee, Nanticoke, Ron Mare, Kenneth White, Lawrence Elsie, Nebo, Clifton Lawrence Senior, Goldsboro Lawrence, Tyrone L. Price, Passerdyke, Charles Fleming, Robert Gannon, Stevie Stevenson, Pine Branch, George C. White, Tom Donaway, Linda Truitt, Texas Road, Hester Johnson, Brian Van Buren, Bernard Nutter.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution Seventy-Five, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Are there any more drainage associations than just this?
That's the complete list for Wycomico County. Any pardon?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. Um, I know there was some issues that some properties weren't getting, um, added to the list when they were spun off from existing properties. Is there any, um, timeline on when that'll be corrected, or?
It's in the works now, I mean, they're reviewing those old files and those old rolls, and I can't...
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Seventy-Six, two thousand and fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Seventy-Five, two thousand and fifteen, say aye. Opposed? Motions carried, resolution passes.
Next item is Resolution Number Seventy-Six, two thousand and fifteen, at the request of the county executive to certify the drainage tax rule for the director of public fin, uh, director of finance, as required by the board of managers of public drainage associations. That's, uh, let, you just appointed. The code provides for the establishment of drainage association, authorizes the formation, their formation as a body politic, and the article grants the board of managers certain powers and duties, which include the recommendation for the... powers and duties, which include the recommendation for the payment to be made by the property owners in the public drainage association, payments for the maintenance of the ditches, that is, ditch maintenance. The viewers for the drainage associations recommend the following assessments. Allen, $3 per crop land acre, 75 cents per woodland acre, minimum billing $15. Idlet, $3 per crop land acre, $1.50 per woodland acre, $20 minimum. Beaver Dam, $2 per crop land, 50 cents per woodland, $15 minimum. Dividing Creek, $7 per crop land acre, woodland 350, and minimum $30. Givens, 50 cents per crop land acre, 50 cents per woodland acre, minimum billing $15. Green Branch, $2.70 per crop land acre, 90 cents per woodland acre, minimum billing $20. Head of Creek, no levy. Horsebridge, 40 cents per crop land acre and 10 cents per woodland acre, minimum billing $8. Laws, 50 cents per crop land acre, 50 cents per woodland acre, minimum billing $15. Mill Branch, $2 per crop land acre, 50 cents per woodland acre, $10 minimum billing. Nanticoke, $7 per crop land acre, 350 for woodland, and $20 minimum billing. For the Nebo Public Drainage Association, $6 crop land, or $6 per crop land acre, no assessment for woodland acres and a minimum billing of $30. Passer Dyke, $4.50 per crop land acre, $1.50 per woodland acre and a minimum billing of $20. Pine Branch, $3 per crop land acre, $1 per woodland acre, minimum billing $15. Texas Road, zero crop land, zero assessment for woodland acre, but minimum acre, minimum assessment $30.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 76-2015?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 76-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 77-2015, at the request of the county executive, to authorize the executive to exec, Safe Streets, Safe Shopper Program overtime funds in the amount of $3,120 from the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to reduce violent crime in the community. The county executive recommends accepting the overtime funds from the city of Salisbury and Captain, right there on cue.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 77-2015?
So moved.
Second? One second, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. Captain Todd Richardson with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Good to see you here. Can you just give us an overview, if you don't mind?
The original grant through Safe Streets was worth $20,890. We were approached during the Christmas season by Salisbury City, where the governor's office had made some additional funds available because of some specific issues surrounding the Christmas time shopping. We'd had some, a lot of car break-ins, some robberies in some shopping areas. They made the funds available to us to increase at that time, because our budget authority was already at $20,890, and we were only halfway through the season. We were able to work this overtime without changing our budget authority. As the year worked on, we had some additional funds in our overtime fund that would allow us to continue to work Safe Streets without coming before you, because the monies would be brought in from other areas. As the year progressed and as the new finance director came on, I approached her about how these funds would work, and she believed we could clean her to come before you and ask for an extension of the Safe Streets money, so that we could fully expend the Safe Streets money throughout the year. We have some operations planned during the springtime that will basically expend the entire Safe Streets grant, and we're just before you to ask for the additional $3120 to extend the Safe Streets grant.
Any questions? I think you explained it very well. All those in favor of Resolution 77-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next item for council consideration is Resolution Number 78-2015, at the request of the county executive, to authorize the executive to accept officer patrol funding in the amount of $10,000 from the Wycomico County Health Department for the enforcement of underage drinking and execute a memorandum of understanding, again, Captain Richardson.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 78-2015?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is a grant that just came about, it began in late March when it came to us. We had some issues with some of the wording in the grant. We spoke with the law department, and we went back to the health department to have them adjust some of the wording. It's a $10,000 grant to provide overtime to specifically target underage drinking during the graduation season, when parties seem to take place. We want to saturate some of these areas. We use social media to find out where some of these parties are going to be at, and we try to increase the patrols in those neighborhoods to just curb these parties, to avoid the underage drinking, so that we avoid the problems that come along with that. This grant will be used in the next six weeks to really saturate graduation parties, those type of things that tend to pop up immediately during this time period. If this is approved today, we'll actually go into some of the operations as early as this weekend.
Question from council?
So you expect parties to start this weekend once Memorial Day? So you'll be busy then? Yes, sir, and like I say, it allows us to saturate some of these areas with additional patrols.
I had 1015 coming over for Saturday night.
Did you need some guidance for those?
Question though is jurisdictional wise, do you specifically look towards the parties that would be in Wycomico County? Are we talking about parties from college students in the city limits, city of Salisbury?
If we could have gotten this through a little bit earlier, we would have targeted some of those, but unfortunately, schools, I think they've already finished their finals and they're on their way home. So we're going to specifically target the high school areas now, which, some of the college parties underage drinking is obviously a problem, but some of them are of age as well, but this year, the high school children are going to get some extra attention.
So how do you coordinate those efforts with the city of Salisbury?
We work with them. I believe they also have a grant available to them as well, and we, I guess, marry this with Safe Streets. Safe Streets is not just Salisbury specifically, it's the greater Salisbury area, but this allows us to go out into the county in all directions to deal with these problems.
Do you track it specifically as far as what successes you have and what is accomplished?
Part of the grant is for us to report back on what we did with the monies as far as the amount of citations, the amount of contact, the amount of parties we went to. They have a specific list of things they want answers for, so they can report back to the state and hopefully get additional funding in future years.
Okay, and I'm assuming that report will go to the executive?
Yeah, we specifically have to report back to the health department, so they can report back to the state, but any information that we can make available to anyone, we'll make it available to you if you like.
It'd be, yeah, that'd be great. I'd like to see that.
I just have one question. You mentioned if this grant would have gone through earlier, and I'm looking at the MOU dated March 2nd, what was the holdup?
There was some specific language that we weren't very comfortable with, and when we went to the law department, they were also not that comfortable with the language. So we went back to the health department, had them clean up the language a little bit, and that's what took a little bit of extra time, because it had to go back to the state, and then, of course, we just missed the window for last council meeting.
Well, I'm glad you stayed on it.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 78-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Mr. Kramer, could we go to Resolution 80? I believe Captain is also supposed to be participating in that.
Resolution Number 80-2015, at the request of the executive, authorizing the executive to execute, sorry, execute an interlocal agreement with the city of Salisbury concerning the 2012 Burn Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, and accepting from the city of Salisbury an amount of $10,409.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 80-2015?
So moved.
Second? Motion's second. Good morning.
This grant was originally set up for three years through the city. The city was the primary applicant, and we assisted in applying for this grant. They funded the grant and they reimburse us. Normally, this would be in our normal budget, and it wouldn't need to be before you, because it would be part of our budget authority. The grant was due to expire fiscal '15, but there was an extension to the grant. There was some additional monies that were made available through the grant, and the city was able to apply for that, and our portion of that is what's in front of you. Like I say, normally, we would just include that in our budget, and you could pre-approve that during your normal budget session, but because this was an extension, we need to come before you to extend our budget authority. I can tell you that specifically, right now, our intent to spend these grant funds is to upgrade our MDT system. The grant was, in mobile data terms, for our cars, some of them are aging. This was, the grant was, is a technology grant to help us keep up with the times. It started out, I believe it was in the $30,000 range three years ago, and it slowly dwindled down to the amount that's in front of you today. But we plan to use this specifically to continue to upgrade our technology, and specifically, we have some aging MDTs that we need to replace. We'll probably expend this in this fiscal year, and that's why we're before you.
Sure. Questions? John?
Todd, what's it cost to upgrade one of these?
After, like, if we just take one out of service and replace it, it's about $5,000. If we add an additional one with all the licensing and all that, it comes up to almost $7,000 in performance. But it's our intention, we have several that are in need of replacement now, so we'll probably be able to get four additional MDTs out of the three.
Yeah, I was under the impression that none of the mobile data terminals were working at all.
No, no, that was cameras, sir.
Just the cameras?
Our camera systems are out of service, but our mobile data terminals are actually, some of them are reaching their fifth year of existence, and I know if you have a five-year-old laptop, you know how well it's performing. But they've actually outperformed what we originally believed that they would do. They've done extremely well, because they are tough books, but we're starting to see some screen failures and that type of thing now. But it's, they made it five years, which is well beyond what we originally thought they would do.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of Resolution 80-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you, sir.
Going back to Resolution Number 79-2015, at the request of the county executive, making supplemental appropriation from contingency to Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism in the amount of $25,000. On February 16th, 2015, a fire suppression system pipe broke at the Civic Center, causing water damage in the main lobby, vault, server room, and several offices. The department is requesting funding to pay for the deductible on our insurance policy.
Entertained a motion?
Ms. Olland and?
And Mr. Williams?
Mr. Whisk, yeah. He was, he wasn't hiding, but I couldn't see him.
He's a bit of a little pig to hide back there.
Yeah.
Did you need a motion?
I will, thank you. Good morning, how's everybody? Entertained a motion, if I could, to accept Resolution 79-2015?
So moved.
Second? Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have expenses.
We have quite a bit of expenses. We had a, we had a challenging winter and early spring at the Civic Center, with the unusually cold winter that we had. We had a pipe break in the fire suppression system on President's Day. Thankfully, the, we, employees were not in the office at that time, because there would have been a lot of wet and possibly injured people when the force of that pipe broke. Also thankfully, one of our employees was coming in to do a little extra work on the day off, and noticed that we had this issue, and made a phone call, and within about an hour to an hour and a half, we had somewhere around 20 to 25 employees and a detention center unit there with inmates to help with the cleanup. The following day was a snow day, and about 15 employees continued to help with that cleanup. And all told, we have about 11,000 square feet of space at the Civic Center that in some way was affected by this water. Thank goodness it was noticed, because the rate at which that water was pumping would have caused catastrophic damage if it had gone much longer. As it is, we're at about a $350,000 bill, working through our insurance company, and this request is to cover the $25,000 deductible, as this is unbudgeted, unforeseen from contingency.
Larry?
Andy, the code requires that the fire suppression systems have a minimum temperature to prevent freezing. What happened?
I, I don't know. The, the suppressions, the pipe that this was in, I do know, the pipe that this, that broke was, was in a walkway, a bulkhead, and there was a, there was airflow that was getting in. The wind was coming out of the perfect direction, it was coming right up through the soffit into that, into that bulkhead, and it caused the freeze up. We've since addressed insulation in that, in that bulkhead. We're addressing the soffit this summer, so that it's a solid soffit rather than a ventilated soffit, and we've added insulation and heater, heater wire to the, to the fire suppression pipes in that area, so that it doesn't happen again.
So you take that route instead of doing a loop with antifreeze in it?
Yes, yes, and I'm not versed enough in fire suppression systems to speak for the benefits of the antifreeze system.
Are they inspected annually?
Yeah, yeah, we meet all codes and protocols.
It's a good thing someone came in that day.
It is.
And the kid, yes?
It's just that, in the, in the process, we, while we were there the second day, we actually noticed a second pipe that was dripping through this process, and we actually caught it before it burst. When we brought the system back on, we re-pressurized the system, we noticed water still dripping from another pipe in that same area, and so we were actually able to avert a second pipe bursting by doing an inspection that same day as well. So, we did actually replace the one that did burst, and it actually split a T-joint totally in half, and we actually couldn't find the second one until we tore the ceiling out, because it shot it so far. And then, the second one, we were able to avoid it actually bursting.
Any questions? Yes, Mark?
Is this $25,000, is that, will that cover our financial? I mean, are we going to be, are you going to come to us for more money to deal with this issue?
No, this, we shouldn't come to you for more money, because this will meet our obligation with the insurance claim and everything else related to it. With the exception of the enhancements that we've made to that, to that bulkhead, the insurance company should notice the possible damages.
And the enhancements, we're planning to take out of the escrow fund that the Civic Center has to make repairs to the Civic Center, so those are coming out of those funds. It's really just the deductible that we, you know, we didn't anticipate having.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 79-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 81-2015, at the request of the executive, confirming the appointment of Matthew B. Heard to the Natural Resources Conservation and Advisory Committee as a forestry representative member of the committee.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 81-2015?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 81-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next item is Resolution Number 82-2015, at the request of the executive, confirming the appointment of Crisper P. McCabe as an environmental representative to the Natural Resources Conservation and Advisory Committee.
Entertained a motion to accept resolution eighty-two two thousand fifteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next item is resolution number eighty-three two thousand and fifteen. There is, there is an amendment to be made to this resolution. The amount is not ten thousand dollars. Not the, the full amount of the request was not available, so the grant is actually six thousand five hundred dollars. This grant, this resolution at the request of the executive authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore Incorporated in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Entertained a motion to accept resolution eighty-three two thousand fifteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I guess we need to entertain a motion to amend to sixty-five hundred?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Discussion on the resolution as amended? I think this is an excellent, an excellent foundation, an excellent effort. Gladys Gosling was a, was a great individual in this community and I'm glad to see that someone is taking this, uh... Taking the lead here.
Yes, there's representatives here from the local management board to support this.
One, one question. In the...
Good morning.
Says... In the body of resolution, it says support twenty-four youth, but in the text it says twenty-three rate of youth. Is it twenty-three or twenty-four?
The original request was for twenty-three youth, but because they had such an overwhelming response to the grant, it's been reduced to sixty-five hundred, which should support fifteen youth in summer camp activities to the Camp Jordan program. And good morning, and by the way, I'm Diana Parnell, the director for Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Why don't you tell us how this developed?
Sure. So through our office, we have a program called the Family Connection Center. And it is a program that works with families here in Wycomico County who come in with an identified need. It could be anywhere from needing support and advocacy through the school system, through the juvenile service court systems, perhaps financial assistance or a need for some affordable housing. Those are just some of the general idea, general needs that families come in for. So from there, we refer them to our partnering community organizations and agencies here in Wycomico. So it's sort of a one-stop shop for families. We do not provide the service. We get the families to the organizations here already in Wycomico. Okay? So through that process, we have found a need to provide summer camp experiences for our families, for our children who reside in low-income families. Summer camps tend to run an average of around a hundred and fifty dollars a week. So you can imagine a household making around twenty thousand with maybe four people, that's a little bit hard to afford. So again, to support our children through the summer, helping them maintain those connections with learning. We found it, um, we found this grant to be a very good match with that need to provide that summer enrichment. You know, to keep that connection for the school year.
Sure.
To help them transition back in, in the fall.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution eighty-three two thousand fifteen say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution eighty-three two thousand and fifteen as amended, passes.
Great. Thank you all.
The next item for council consideration is resolution number eighty-four at the request of the executive authorizing the executive to accept a grant award from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention under the Byrne Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars. Director George Callimerakis and members of his staff from the Department of Corrections are here for answers to your questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Likewise.
Twice in a week.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm George Callimerakis, Director of Department of Corrections. And I have Deputy Thomas Kimball and Deputy Chris Tyler with me today.
Excuse me, once, did I entertain a motion?
Not yet.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Entertained a motion to accept resolution eighty-four two thousand and fifteen?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Okay. This grant came about as a result of the hard work of the Maryland Correctional Administrator Association. Some of you may be familiar with that, but it's an association made up of local corrections and state corrections. And in the last two years, we've worked very hard to be a recognized voice in Annapolis on issues that affect us and also with GoCap, we've worked closely. And first, I want to thank you all for adding this to the agenda because this grant developed very quickly in April. We had a very short deadline to get the, our request in, and now we have a short response time to accept it. So thank you for adding it to the agenda. It was requested the day we received notice that it was awarded. Used, just approved a number of resolutions for law enforcement, you know. So after law enforcement gets done with their job, they bring them to central booking and then we take over. So this grant, again, through the hard work of MCAA, GoCap has recognized that corrections statewide has been the stepchild when it comes to grants, particularly for technology to help us maintain a safe and secure environment in our facilities. So they allocated just about a half a million dollars late this, or early this spring specifically for corrections. And we were able to submit our requests and they were accepted and approved by them a hundred percent. So that's what this grant is for. The, the equipment we're asking for is to replace our aging X-ray machine, which in the past year, we had to spend some money to repair. It's very technical. It has like fourteen or fifteen very expensive boards in it and if one goes up, it's quite expensive. So we have the opportunity to put a new one into service. You've heard a lot probably in the media about cell phone detection in correctional facilities and we want to purchase a portable unit. In the last several years, we've had a half a dozen to ten come in that we know about, that we find, but we don't know necessarily if any come in that we don't find, and this will give us that ability. And then thirdly, we're asking, or we're going to be purchasing a, a, a new key control system. We have counting duplicates, over eighteen hundred keys in the facility and several hundred are in use daily. And if you're missing one key, you have potential breaches of security. And, and this technology will enable us to identify who has the key. They'll either have to use, it can be biometrics or it can be using their employee number. So the only way they can get a key out of the box is that way. And then it has alert systems, so at the end of a shift, it tells you if any keys haven't been put back in the box, so. And key control is obviously a significant part of what some of our staff do. And they're also multitasking, doing twenty other things. So having that technology will free us up a little bit to do some of the other more, or equally critical things like observing what's going on and maintaining control. So that's it in a nutshell. And I want to thank my staff because they put the grant together very quickly. We had a couple other individuals involved, you know, we talked about how we write grants and who writes them. But Ms. Facet also in our department and Ms. Morton worked on this with, with the deputies to pull it together. So... Questions?
When you find an inmate with a cell phone, does that, do they usually leave them on? Is that how you find them?
They have to be working, yeah. They, they have to be in use basically and transmitting, yeah. Any other questions?
You, you mentioned employees using their numbers to get the key. What about somebody using another employee's number? Does that help?
Well, that's why we'll have to decide which way we want to go, whether it's they put their finger on a pad and it tells us who it is or, or if we go with the number. But it would be, you know, you would put a unit like that in an area where we have cameras. So we'd always have a backup to see who was actually there at the time, yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor of resolution eighty-four two thousand and fifteen say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great day.
You too.
Next item for council consideration at the request of the county executive is a resolution in support of, resolution number eighty-five two thousand and fifteens in support of the application of funds for the Maryland Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. This proposal is by the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Services Incorporated to request assistance through a CBDBG grant in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for closing costs of systems to low and moderate income families purchasing a home as their primary residence within Wycomico County. They'll be able to provide assistance to thirty families with an average grant of ten thousand dollars to carry a five-year lien that will be reduced twenty percent per year so that the lien, if, if conditions are met, will be forgiven in five years. Ms. Cheryl Meadows from Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service and our esteemed planning director. Mr. Lennox is here to answer any questions.
I think at this time, we, we would want to introduce a, a public hearing first, if I'm not mistaken.
As a matter of fact, so, and I'll turn the rest of that over to Mr. Baker.
Okay.
Didn't mean to step on your heels, Mr. Director.
Yeah. Number eighty-seven, the new one on the agenda?
Well, I hadn't, I hadn't come to that yet, that's right. Resolution number eighty-seven two thousand and fifteen authorizing the executive to submit a mid-year child welfare grant from the Maryland Office of Courts Foster Care Court Improvement Program in the amount of three thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sherry Mineshine, I'm the acting court administrator with the Circuit Court for Wycomico County. I've brought with me Lauren Cooper, our family service coordinator. We're very pleased that you were kind enough to add us at this late juncture.
Glad to have you here. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept resolution eighty-seven two thousand and fifteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So what brings us here today is the opportunity to educate some fifty to sixty local professionals in the area of the foster care court improvement project. The grant that we've requested is a little over three thousand dollars. It's from the Maryland Administrative Office of the Courts. It was a last-minute opportunity to get us a low, regional training that we could enhance the opportunities for what's called kinship care and educational stability. Kinship care is for those children that are in out-of-home placements, in other words, foster care. The goals of that foster care improvement and Department of Social Services is to keep the children with family members as much as possible. And we want to make sure that the courts do everything that they can do to support that.
Okay. Any questions? This may be a quick one. All those in, all those in favor of resolution eighty-seven two thousand and fifteen say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thank you.
Many thanks.
Appreciate what you're doing. Mr. Baker?
I'm the first, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Yes, a public hearing was advertised that the, today the council would receive input from the public on the county's proposed participation in the SFY twenty sixteen Community Development Block Grant Program and also receive an update on current CDBG project performances. And it's also my understanding that the resolution eighty-five dash twenty fifteen would be amended to increase the amount requested from three hundred and thirty thousand to five hundred thousand.
Excuse me?
The amount, three thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand would be amended to five hundred thousand.
Five hundred?
And Mr. Lennox and Cheryl Meadows are here to conduct a public hearing.
At this time, we, we open the floor to a public hearing on, on resolution eighty-five two thousand and fifteen, if any...
Generally on these, you would hear, they would give you an update on current projects and then that would be the public hearing.
I will take your lead, Mr. Baker. Good morning. Can you just let everybody know who you are?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Lennox, Planning and Development Director, along with Cheryl Meadows, who's Executive Director of Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service. Thank you for having us this morning. The, as the council is well aware, the Community Development Block Grant Program is one that the county has taken advantage of in the past and is currently in the middle of actually a, a two-year program as authorized for submission by the, by the council back in two thousand and fourteen. The county itself has activities underway involving housing rehabilitation that will span the two-year period, and those are proceeding well on schedule as, as planned. We also have a sub-recipient agreement existing with Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Services, which Mrs. Meadows will review with you. Even though we're, it is very early in our program year, they have been extremely successful so far in, in spending the money, which of course means that, in helping our, our citizens. And at this point, we would look for an application to go to the Community Development Block Grant Program through the state of Maryland, of course, for this upcoming cycle to further extend that program. And Mrs. Meadows can explain the specifics to you.
Thank you. As Mr. Lennox mentioned, we received two hundred thousand through the CDBG program in two thousand and fourteen for a down payment and closing cost assistance program to be used by low and moderate income families purchasing a home within Wycomico County but outside of the city limits as their primary residence. The program is a two-year program. However, we spent our money very quickly. Our program opened in December of two thousand and fourteen and the last loan will close on May twenty-seventh of this month. So we're out of money already, which is a good thing. That's why we amended the request for this year's application from three hundred and thirty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars. All applicants for the program must be below eighty percent of their median income. And I've attached the income guidelines to the information I just handed out. For this most recent round of funding, all applicants did meet the eighty percent and below requirement. They were all first-time home buyers and the average interest rate was four point oh four percent. So rates are still really low, very good time to buy. We did serve twenty families and you have a list there of the, the street name of all the people that participated in the program.
Mr. Baker, I assume at this point, we would introduce or entertain the...
Public comments.
Public comments?
Yes, sir.
If there's anyone that would like to make a public comment, President Ashanti? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ashanti, President of Wycomico County, NACP. Just wanted to ask you a question. What, what streets or roads were, were involved or in the county?
Do we have an extra list?
Okay, uh, East Road. Okay, that's good. My reason for asking that is that for over fifty years, there is a dilapidated row house on the corner of Road Street and East Road. And I know that it's been there that long because it was there when I was a child. And it should be demolished. And we support the work that Salisbury Neighborhood Housing is doing. And we hope that it can be extended. Thank you.
Jack, I just wanted to say this, this money is specifically for down payment and closing cost assistance, not for rehab or...
No.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Entertained a motion to accept resolution eighty-five two thousand and fifteen?
As amended.
Excuse me?
As amended.
Um, well, I was going to amend it after we accepted it.
Will you make comments, counsel?
We will, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Entertained a motion to accept resolution eighty-five two thousand and fifteen?
So moved.
Second? And discussion, all those in favor of amending resolution eighty-five two thousand and fifteen to five hundred thousand dollars? Say aye?
Aye.
Second? I guess I would entertain that, okay. Any discussion, it's, yeah, it's, it's a free-for-all today.
And I was going, it's also, it's also going to fifty families instead of thirty.
Correct.
Fifty families instead of thirty. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any discussion on the amendment first, the increase in the fifty homes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to resolution eighty-five two thousand and fifteen, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Discussion on the resolution as amended. Mr. Holloway?
Yeah. Ms. Meadows, I know you said that...
Ms. Meadows, I know you said there was an income limit. Is there any kind of limit on the price of the home that the people buy?
No.
I noticed most of the homes are in the 119 to, but then probably five or six years ago, when you were here for the same purpose, they had a home that had been purchased in Nutters Crossing with these, that got, you know, help with the closing costs, and I see we have one here, out of the whole list, it's 217,000. So I guess my question would be, there's no limit, somebody could come in with a half a million dollar home?
As long as they're below 80% of area median income.
Yeah.
So, you know, with the rates as low as they are, and with some of the other programs that are available, in fact, this particular home on Crooked Oak Lane is the only new construction in this whole list. All the others were existing properties. But as long as they have no other debt and are below 80% of area median income, it is possible for someone to purchase a house in that price range.
So somebody could come in, purchase half a million dollar home, and get a 10,000?
They probably wouldn't have the income if they were below 80%.
But it's possible.
It's possible.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't know if it would be possible.
I don't think anybody that's up below 80%.
Not even a half. I mean, you know, if you're looking, I just think it would be more help to people that's buying homes in the hundred, 150,000 range than when you jump above the two, you know, if we're here to help low-income people.
Well, they are. I mean, they meet the criteria.
Yeah. What is the dollar amount? When you say below 80%, what is the total amount?
It's the chart that's right behind here, so for a family of four, that'd be below 60,650.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that caught my eye, too. I mean, we, you know, paying a mortgage on something similar to that price, surprised if, yeah, I'm surprised at that. I'll just say that. So I guess my question would be, what, do you follow up? I mean, you know, what are the long-term, I guess, outcomes of some of these? I mean, do we have information on whether this helps people stay in homes? I mean, you know, is there a foreclosure rate? I mean, what, you know, what are the outcomes of this program after five, 10 years?
Well, we've only done one other, this is the first program like this that we've done with the county.
Okay.
And so far, the ones that have already closed are still there.
I hope that would be.
Right, right. So yes, if one of them does go into foreclosure, we, within the first five years, we will be notified because we'll have a lien on the property.
Okay.
And we'll want to recoup the funds, the county funds, that are in it so we can continue to reuse those funds for other families.
Okay.
But I can't answer your question on this one.
I think it's an excellent program to help people put people in homes and promote homeownership, so I think it's an excellent idea, and I thank you for what you do.
I'd like to thank you, Cheryl, for what you and SNHS has done for our community also. I know you've been here almost since the beginning of SNHS.
Twenty-one years.
And helped a lot of people in our community, and it certainly has been worthwhile, and I'm sure that SNHS is still a model that sets the standards in the United States as it was when it was first conceived, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? The question that I had is, you say you're inundated with applicants, I assume?
Well, this money was gone quickly, so we had, yes, we had several people come in afterwards that we could not assist. Unfortunately, we can't keep a waiting list because we can't ask a seller to hold this property until more funds come available. We do have other sources of funding. We have our own standalone closing cost loan program. Unfortunately, it's not a grant, but it is a loan program that people can take advantage of.
Is that for Salisbury specifically, or is that-
We have one to assist in the county as well. Now, the income restrictions are a little higher, meaning someone making more money could apply to 120% of area median income. In the city limits, we have no income restrictions, so.
The loans that are, are these done through just normal banks, or are they done through-
These mortgage loans?
Right, yeah.
Yes, yes, they are.
Well, I know that-
Some of them are USDA loans. Most of them are FHA loans.
I know, I've heard, you know, that loans are being tightened up, and people haven't, but I also see here where people are borrowing, actually borrowing their loans are more than what the purchase price of the homes are, so I'm wondering, and that's nothing to do with your program, I'm just wondering how that's getting done when you, you know, if the banks aren't, apparently they're not tightening up as much as everybody says they are, you know.
Well, on credit restrictions, they are tightening up. However, probably, probably all of these loans required mortgage insurance because the applicant didn't have 20% down, and a lot of lenders will allow you to finance the mortgage insurance premium upfront.
I see, okay.
Which makes the loan amount higher than the purchase price.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you follow this after it's done to see whether or not they default on the loan?
We'll follow it for five years, but other than that, we would not, we would not be notified unless we happen to see it posted in the paper. We can certainly do that if you would like us to track it for a longer period of time.
Well, I'm not asking that, I just, you know, I see when someone, you know, someone's coming to help for, you know, a house that's 217,000, and they're borrowing 221,000, it's almost like a recipe for disaster, so I'm very curious as to whether or not by trying to help this person, you may be actually creating a problem there. That's why I was wondering whether you're tracking it or not.
I mean, well, we do, you know, go through their loan application, we do verify their income, we do verify that they are gainfully employed, have been in their job at least two years, and that they can make the payment.
Mr. Baker, I guess there's nothing the council can do as far as changing this up to put more restrictions on it to, is that pretty much done through the grant?
Actually, I believe you can. You can put your own restrictions on the program.
Stand corrected, Mr. Baker.
Mary Ashanti, again with the NACP. I understand what you're saying because years ago, we worked with people that, you know, bought houses and whatever, houses that went into foreclosure because they could not keep it up. And so if you have a low-income family, and they're buying a 200, 200,000 house, and the other one is even more, I'm like, I'm concerned, that concerns me, you know, about that, about creating a failure rate.
Yes, you can't make the program less restrictive than what the state requires, but you can add more restrictions.
I don't want to hold this up because we do know that it does a world of good, in the most part, but maybe we should set up a work session and look at this, and maybe we can, so we don't come up with, I know we had concerns before, John, when you were on the council before about some of the homes that were purchased, and I do, I really do. I think you could help more people. Do you run out really quick? I mean, you have, you're overwhelmed with applications, right? Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, we'll do that. I'm assuming something will come up next year as well.
Yes. This application is due on June 5th, which means I have to have it done before that for Lori Carter and Planning and Zoning, so I don't know how quickly.
We don't want to micromanage it for you.
No, 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 I understand. I understand.
At some time, one's going to pop up a lot more than that, and it's going to be a little embarrassing, I think, when they sit up here, you know, so. If you don't mind, we could work with you on it, we could have a work session.
That's fine.
And you could have some guidelines that you, maybe you have something in mind.
Any other questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of resolution eighty-five, two thousand and fifteen as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried? Resolution passes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Mr. Baker?
The next item on the agenda is resolution number eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen. Notice was given in compliance with chapter 22 of the code that the council would hear a public comment on the proposed resolution to permit the relocation of the forest conservation easement for Todd and Kathy Justice. The existing easement portion to be removed contains approximately .29 acres on the northwest side of Zion Road in the Rosewood subdivision, and mitigation would be provided at a one-to-one ratio on the same site.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. At this time, we'd like to open the floor to any public comments on resolution eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Entertain a motion to accept resolution eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? No. Okay. No discussion. All those in favor of resolution eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried? Resolution passes.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. At this time, we'll entertain public comments in general from anyone who'd like to address the council. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Brown Thomas, and I'm coming forward to ask you some questions. I've been attending to meetings, and I've been writing down what questions I want to ask to see if, you know, you will give me some answer to it. Okay, on 5/5, I wanted the gentleman to talk about the timeline for West Salisbury School. Where you at with that?
What we can do, we'll allow you to make the public comments, and we will certainly write everything down. Mr. Kramer will get your name and your address.
Okay.
And then we'll respond, okay?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay. The second question is about the school construction that I keep hearing from the Board of Education that they are asking for. How much is in that fund, and is you all going to restore that, or you going to think about it?
That's the school construction.
I'm not sure what the question is. Are you talking about the-
School construction.
The school construction fund was, that was, the school construction fund was eliminated, and the question now is whether or not the county will choose to, the council, the executive will choose to.
But that's, I believe there might be a misconception here because the fund that the Board of Education has been talking about, the purpose of it originally was for the Board of Education to keep the money that's left over from their budget year after year, and they would then decide to use that money for small projects and not have to get approval from the county executive or the county council to do that. That really has nothing to do with school, major school renovations, or new school construction. Perhaps the answer to your question as to how much money is being proposed for school construction?
Yes.
In the capital improvements program for this year, it was part of this, it was a part of the subject of our public hearing last night, there's a 15 million dollar bond issue that will be sold, it's projected to be sold in January of 2016, and of that 15 million dollar bond issue, approximately 10 million dollars will be for school construction projects. Is that what you were asking?
Yes, because I got confused about what they were saying. I didn't know if the funding was for to help build new schools, or it was just for the minor.
We can make sure you get a copy of the capital improvement program.
Well, actually, it's posted online if you have access to the internet.
I don't have access. I can't afford all that.
If you give us your contact information, we'll get you a budget.
I can't afford it. Another question, and I don't know if this is off the cuff or not, do the casinos help fund the school buildings? I mean, I be reading the Sun paper, and I was wondering, do any of that money come towards this county for building of schools?
Of course, there are no casinos in Wycomico County.
No, I'm talking about Maryland. I'm talking about, from the Maryland part, do, because they do have casinos in Baltimore and things, and I'm just wondering, do we receive any of that money to help build schools?
We can review that and get back to you on that.
We really don't have access to the information as to how, as to how the casino proceeds, casino proceeds funnel into state funds, state accounts.
Okay.
And the decision, the decisions as to how those funds are used are made by the Board of Public Works on the recommendation of Dr. Lever's group, and that's the-
Interagency.
Hmm? Yes, Interagency School Construction Committee. We really don't, we can look, but I really don't think we'll find any answers to how much money from casino-
Oh, okay.
-comes to Wycomico County.
The actual county where the casino resides, that county does receive some funding, and then the rest of that is-
Goes into, the rest goes in the state.
Kramer says it's decided by the state.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I keep reading it from the Sun, and I was just wondering, did we get any of the money? That's all I got to ask.
All right. If you, again, would leave your name and address and phone number with Mr. Kramer so he can contact you, or we can contact you with that, answers to that information, and get a copy to CIP to you.
I think Ms. Holland might have gone out to see if she has a copy of the budget from last night, and if so, we'll give it to you today.
I got the budget last night. I was there.
Okay.
But the gentleman asked me last night about the construction of the school, a 350 or a 650, and I went with the 650. But I did call this morning to ask about, he said that they probably build a school just for the amount of kids that are in there now. Well, I called this morning before I got here, and at West Salisbury, it's overcrowded, but they're going to let me know how much overcrowded that they are at that school. So, you know, I checked behind what somebody asked me, and I'm going to give you a figure the next time I see you, but that was a good question. But like I told him, as the community grow, and I'm not being smart, the kids are, the kids are having kids, and a lot of the kids will probably be going to West Salisbury because it's a, they're starting at an early age of birth, and so, and he did say that, and I think we might do need a 650 school because it's an overpopulation. As I say, baby boomers are coming back, you know, it's a lot of kids being born at an early age, so I don't think 350 going to suffice with the building of the school. You might have to go a little farther with the 650.
Thank you very much.
And that's my opinion. I mean, that's me saying it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Good morning.
Going to President Cannon, and all those assembled, good morning. My name is Mary Ashanti, President of Wycomico County, NACP, and first, let me say, it does my heart good to see Ms. Thomas here from the community asking questions and that type of thing. As you know, most of the time, I'm, it's me, and this here, so it does my heart good for someone else to be concerned about what's going on or show concern. Next, on May the 30th, from 10:00 to 2:00, the Eastern Shore NACP branches will host a summit to address credit repair, prevention of foreclosure, and default on mortgages. The workshop is free, we'll have a free brunch, a free lunch, it's open to the public, and it's located midway, it's located in Cambridge at Shop Tank Elementary. And like I said, it's open to, you know, open to the public. We hope to have a good turnout, and for those people that are having credit problems, and those, you know, you will be able to get good help. For more information, you can, for Wycomico County, you can call 410-543-4187. In Dorchester County, 443-521-2650. And in Worcester County, 443-944-6701. So we're hoping to be able to share some good information and help some folks. Secondly, since the public, since public safety and education receive a large portion of the county budget and is a major concern to many citizens in Wycomico County, we will address on May the 28th, 7 o'clock at Chipman Cultural Center, we will address education- we will address education, we will have education representatives to address closing the achievement gap. And what we ask is for them to give us information, a comparison from two thousand, from twenty twelve to, to now, so that we'll know where we are. You know, as you know, if it's not measurable, it's not achieved, you can't achieve it if it's not measurable. So at least you can't show progress. So we're asking them to do that, and they agreed. And after that, Matt Masarello, the state's attorney, will share information on how to improve relationship between law enforcement and citizens. And it's May the twenty-eighth, seven o'clock at Chipman Cultural Center, and it's open to the public, and we're going to give our door prices. Want to see some of you all there.
Thank you, President Shawnee. Any other public comments?
Good morning, Bob Culver.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time. I'd like to just make a couple of quick comments here, and, and I would like to thank you all for your time last night for the public hearing, and the fact that we got out in twenty-five minutes, I think says a lot, and for you all going through that. I want to make an announcement today, and I haven't had a chance, and some of you I have talked to, but I wanted to announce that Andy Wisk, who you met earlier, is up here, is the acting director for Parks, Recreation, Civic Center, taking over, and I'm very proud of that. He has, he's done a great job during, during the winter that we had so much problem, so the organizational skills that he possesses and his staff, he's done very well. So I, I do want to make that publicly known. So other than that, I just feel like, you know, we're, we're moving ahead forward. Some of the things on our, our economic development team will be meeting next week. We're very, very appreciative of nine or ten members that we have got signed up for that, that want to take an, an active role. So any questions or any comments that you all have got, we'd love to hear from it. The other thing I'd like to bring you up to date with, as well as the public, we're waiting for Mr. Day, Jake Day, to get back from his two weeks of guard training, or reserve service, I guess is with, with Jake, and we will be meeting again with them regarding the fire service agreement. So to let you know that this hasn't dropped, it's still on, but we're, we're having to wait till Mr. Day gets back, and so we will continue. If you all have any suggestions or questions, please bring them forward, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Executive Culver. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments. Councilman Dodd?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up again today. It's, it's great to see a good turnout, and I like people coming up and asking us questions. Congratulations, Mr. Wisk there, on what you're doing for the county. I'd also like to point out that our county executive does not have to be here, so thank you for attending, and thank you for being here the whole time. He did mention the budget hearing last night. It was quick, it went by probably less than twenty-five minutes, but anyway, PAC fourteen was there, so it's available for future viewing, I assume, later on, so thank you for everybody that attended that. Memorial Day is coming, so I'd like to, to ask the public to be safe out there. We had Captain, the captain from the Sheriff's Office talking about underage drinking and partying, so be safe out there, be careful driving. I'll be attending the Memorial Day ceremony. It'll be May twenty-fifth at ten a.m. That's a great event at the Civic Center, at the Wycomico County War Veterans Memorial. I think I've been there just about every year. Graduations are coming up, Wycomico County High School graduations are coming up Friday, May twenty-ninth, May thirtieth. I'd like to congratulate the new class of graduates and wish them luck on their new journey. They're starting a new chapter in their life. Got a couple of other things, but I think some other people talked about it, but thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you, Councilman Dodd. Any other council comments? Everybody's quiet, okay. Presidential comments, again, congratulations, Andy, very well deserved. The only other comment I would make, President Shawnee, I do appreciate the fact that you come to all of our council meetings, and I know you're involved in a lot of community events throughout Wycomico County, because I see you at those events, and I appreciate your concern about the community as a whole and your comments tonight, today. This weekend, I had the opportunity to go to Sharp Town for Operation Week Care. Jeff Merritt has a great operation going there where they package, they, they send packages overseas to the troops, and there were a few hundred people there to help out. We started with breakfast at about seven-thirty, and then we went over to the American Legion, and from there, we packaged, they have a complete assembly line, three times the size of this room, where they package, they, they put messages inside, they put food, stuffs, and, you know, soaps and things, and put it all together and send it out. So I believe you said it was thirteen thousand dollars in expenses just for postage to get that, that many boxes out to the, to the troops overseas. So I'd like to thank them for everything that they're doing. It's Operation Week Care. That being said, I have nothing else to add. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work sessions.
That wasn't agreed on. I mean, I, look, I, I think Clean Chesapeake's doing a good job, and I think we need it. There's always another pending disaster. You know, there was fustia back in the nineties, phosphorus now, you know, it's always something else coming up that we have to, to address. But at what cost here, I mean, is, do we think it's doing the right job, a good job?
I guess my question is, so the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, it's the law firm that runs it, is that correct?
That is.
And the law firm gets all the, you know, all the three hundred thousand or whatever it is. I, I ran a trade association before I came here, and we had staff in the trade association, and then the staff, you know, employed a law firm. Because law firms, they'll take, you know, I mean, like, like everyone that approaches us, you know, there's no amount of money that's enough. There's always a need for more money, and, and so when you, you know, have staff that separate from the law firm, they, they represent the members' interest and try to contain the cost of the law firm and, you know, squeeze as much out of them as they can get. I mean, not always successfully, but this seems like a, a very flawed method to have an organization like this because, you know, we don't, how much oversight do we have over what they spend? I mean, you know, do, you know, like you said, you know, do we know what their costs are? I mean, we, we get a lot of paper from them, but, you know, it's, this law firm's always going to find a reason to do, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of work, so that, I mean, that's my concern kind of about the way the spending's going.
We don't get an itemized bill, that's true, Mark, and I, when I was on council in your position, I, I questioned the value of it, and I questioned the, the cost per hour, because attorneys can run pretty high money-wise, and you, as you well know, they were giving us a fair rate for what they, what service they were doing. But it, it was based basically on the number of counties that we could get involved, and we started off like in six counties or something like that, and got up to eight or nine. And now Frederick has backed out, so a lot of it has to do, of course, with, with the dam, okay? And now the Exaline, Pepco, and all of them are talking about merging. I think it's still open. I don't know where it's going to go. But do we need a law firm representing us? You know, we've got a governor now who's very, seems to be very much attuned to what's going on. Before the previous administration, we had no luck with, with getting anything through to that governor. So honestly, I'd have to question, you know, whether or not we really want that, that thirty thousand dollars we could put to other use.
What's, what's, Dorchester County is the one that initiated this whole program.
Yep. So what we're saying here is there's no county oversight to the law firms of what they're spending? Is there, you know, I mean, I know there's a, there's a Clean Chesapeake Coalition between the county.
Yeah, there's a group of, there's a, yeah, there's a board that exercises oversight, but in terms of what the details are, I mean, I, it, I mean, I would, I would think that, first of all, I think Clean Chesapeake did, did an excellent job of getting the Conawingo Dam on the radar screen. I think had it not been for the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, that issue would have been glossed over. I really believe that. The question is, what's the value, and what's the ongoing value? And, and I think, I think that we really ought to have a work session with representatives from that board and have that discussion. I did let Chip know that it was going to be on the agenda today, but, you know, I'm sure he's busy and he couldn't make it down here. But I think we, I think to be comfortable going forward, we need to understand, okay, what is the agenda going forward? And what is the oversight to pay, or to consider paying the sixty-two fifty request? I, I think we should have an accounting for, okay, how did that arise? What, 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 what generated that additional bill?
It says here, because one county dropped out, they're making it up, you know, that's.
Yeah, but how was the money spent, I guess is really my question.
So what happened if next year another county drops out? Do we have to flip the bill for them too?
Yeah, is it going to go up?
Those are the discussions that I think we should have.
Yeah, I mean, the, the group I had, you know, we had a budget based on members, and you were charged a fee. That was your fee. If, if money ran low, then told the law firm, just do less work. I mean, that, you know, you didn't say, oh, well, everybody else has to pay more now because the law firm wants money. I mean, that's, you know, and again, I understand the memorandum tried to account for that eventuality by saying that that may be an issue. But, yeah, that seems like a bad way to run, I mean, it seems like a good way to run it from the law firm's perspective, but not from the members' perspective.
And I agree with you, Mark, and I think that the other issue is that if we're going to participate and give them money, we should take a more active role. You know, if we just give them the money and say, okay, what have you done for us?
Who used to represent for the council? You used to be at the law.
I was, yeah, I think, I've been the president, I think, as though, yeah.
I, no, that's, that's a surprise. I mean, I was on one conference call, but.
Sorry I brought that up.
Off the rails again. I've attended a couple of their board meetings when they've had them on days that we were having make legislative. But in terms of, of having a really structured schedule of meetings, who attends that type thing, it, it's been, it's been ad hoc.
And also, I think their, their focus when we joined the Coalition two years ago was because we were concerned that their primary interest was on the Conawingo Dam and the South Carolina River. And I think that they've expressed this, and they've gotten public opinion to agree that it is a major concern. And I think they've even gotten the environmental organizations to acknowledge that it is maybe a little bit bigger concern than it was initially anticipated. And I think the governor's picked up that theme and gone back, and they've gone, they're revisiting, the governor is revisiting and taking another look at being more proactive with the environmental group, which will benefit our county also. You know, I'm not sure that we actually need to get involved as much as we have been with it.
I think it's, I think it's worth a work session to ask them what the next steps are, what they see for this year. And, and to answer, we have a letter here from Wycomico Environmental Trust saying that they're unclear what benefits, if any, will be received. And that's a direct question we need to ask them, how is it going to benefit Wycomico County? But I think we need the courtesy of a work session, Bill.
Sure. As far as the question that was asked, the executive, from my understanding, Matt, I thought that you and Mr. Culver were on the, our representatives of the Clean Chesapeake Coalition.
I think he passed the buck, John.
Sorry, yeah. Yeah, it's not, not.
The executive office is not on, we're not on, I mean, we get the emails from, just like you all do.
But you're, you aren't, you haven't, the communication must be very weak because you are listed as well as Councilman Holloway as the.
Make sure you say which council.
There've been no meetings that we've gone to, and of course, the ones that I've attended usually in the past have been the ones during the Mako conventions, you know. And that usually ends up, if you remember last year, Ocean City, just kind of, we voted on something that a lot of us didn't even really know what, what it was involved, to be honest with you, so.
I think maybe we ought to send a question to this Clean Chesapeake Coalition for a more defined role of what they're doing.
I agree with that, John.
You know, so we, so we'll know what we're voting for or against.
Sure.
And what their plans are in the next year or two years, what their goals are. Like, like John said, you know, they, I think that they really did a good job on bringing out the issue with the Conawingo Dam. I know that Dorchester's the one that initiated the whole program, and I was willing at the time to take part. But we do have a new governor. That doesn't mean it all goes away. One of the things I remember is how adamant the environmental community was against us being on that, and that kind of made you think, well, why are they so adamant against us being on it?
Yeah.
It kind of gives you pause for thought there, you know.
And you still have to consider the fact that we also, while we do have a friendly administration now, you still have the federal government to deal with.
That's correct, yeah.
And we don't have a friendly administration.
Federal, on the federal level, right, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Well, at the very least, if, I mean, maybe they could do less work, I mean, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I, I can't.
I mean, I mean, that's the thing, you know, you know, yeah, exactly, you know, if they were doing whatever it was before, if they could do half of that now that we have Governor Hogan in office. I mean, yeah, I, again, I'm sure they'll find a way to, well, they need to do exactly the same or more, but, you know, the members maybe need to set, you know, do a little more oversight control over this.
On behalf of that sixty-two fifty that the bill was for now, do you want us just to kind of get them to hold off on that until such time as, do you have that work session here?
Yeah, it's a, it's a January invoice. This, this invoice has been around for some time now. Are they, I mean, what, I guess.
It's a request.
Nobody's locked the doors on the building.
It's a request. I mean, we can contact Chip and see if we can, you know, get a work session set up, and I think having, you know, good discussion with them is in order to, you know, first to address the invoice we've gotten, but I think as importantly, our continuing engagement with this group.
What are other counties doing, do you know?
I, you know, I don't know. I don't.
Be nice to know what the other counties.
I think that's a good idea. Maybe we could get, maybe we could get your staff to reach out to the other counties and find out.
Yeah, we can do that.
What their plans for the future are.
Right, we can do that. I'd be glad to do that.
So we'll be scheduling another work session, I think.
This is what he wants to schedule with Chip to come back and.
As long as it doesn't charge for coming down.
Chip's not going to come down for free. It's a very good.
Yeah, we've paid for, I mean, we've paid for Chip.
Yeah.
Well, then I guess it answers the twenty-five questions.
We're a member.
We're a member, yeah.
Use your discretion.
We're a member.
Well, I'll schedule the work session.
Well, then you have to pay.
You let us know who is.
Then you have to pay.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, and what I think we'll do is we'll break for lunch, and when we come back, we'll be coming back at twelve-thirty with a discussion with the Board of Education, open work session, and followed by the concession agreement with Maryland and Seventh Inn East stretch.
We have with us distinguished members of the Board of Education and everybody else, right? So if you'd like to come forward, then we can make sure that when you speak that you do have a mic. Council member may have to share with you. It'd be nice if we could resolve that at some time.
I'm the senior man. I'm, I'm the one that you get to whip on today.
It's your turn.
Yeah, that's right.
How's everybody?
Great, good.
Good, thank you.
Good, good. Appreciate you coming last night and attending and.
Just to share with you, Dr. Frederson and Mr. Willie are in Baltimore to the Teacher Year Luncheon, so they, that's why they're not here today.
Should I announce today then, the Teacher Year?
I don't think so.
I think it's just a luncheon, celebration luncheon.
I think what we, I guess, could review, I know that the executive has proposed a massive effort, which the council, I'm ninety percent sure, would not plan on making any cuts to, to those recommendations. And I know last night, in the bulk of the conversation, there was some talk about additional funding, and they were mentioning specific points that they would like to see addressed with the additional funding. What was it? Was it an eight hundred thousand? Was that the number that was? So I was, I was, I would just like to get a better idea of what you're looking at with those one-time funds, and if you can help direct us. And just announce who you are, a couple, so that those people there know.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Ward. I'm the controller for the Board of.
My name is Bruce Ward, I'm the Controller for the Board of Education. On page 62 of the budget book, you have the list of one-time items that the board submitted. List of eight different items that total $834,500, and I believe that's what Mr. Willie and several of the board members were addressing last night. I will say that as a result of the amended budget, and as a, consequently, as a result of the action taken by the legislature with the House Bill 72 Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act that was passed and enrolled on April the 8th, the additional state aid for us of 1.5 million resulted in the amended budget that you have in front of you, and with that additional monies and with MOE, we now have a balanced budget that does include these one-time funds. One-time requests. Now, the point that I believe that Mr. Willie and several board members were making was if the council saw fit to fund some of these one-time items, that would free up some funding to do some of the unfunded requests, I think, Matt, that you had asked about, and we have now included in this document on page 172, some of those one-time items are some of those unfunded items. Specifically, what Mr. Willie referred to was item number 34, the additional reading teachers.
Read intervention.
Read intervention, yes. So, that, I hope Mr. Cannon addresses.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification, because that's exactly what some people were saying, you know, they've got the additional funding, wouldn't that cover it? So, you are talking about that having been covered. Where were the extra ones, you said on 172?
Page 172 is all the list, page 172 of your budget book.
Well, I went there. Oh.
Yep.
Well, so, I guess, it's confused a little bit, how, how would it work to fund one-time budget requests for teacher salaries, essentially, is what this looks like?
No, what we're saying is that if you were to fund these one-time items that are on page 62.
Yeah.
We would use funds within our operating budget that is currently earmarked for these one-time, redirect it to pay for these additional teachers.
But then, that would, that would, these teachers would then come back next year as continuing.
No, because we would utilize part of that 1.5 that's ongoing, that's currently now being directed to help fund these one-time, will now redirect that to pay for the teachers, use if any one-time money came through, to pay for these one-time items. That would go away next year.
That would not go to maintenance.
That's exactly correct. What the council and the county executive have done for the past two years, last year they funded $90,000 off MOE to take care of technology items relative to park. The year before that, they funded about 2.5 million, something, 2.3 million for security-related issues. Again, it was off of the MOE table and through the reimbursement only. So, that's, that's how that would work.
Okay, Mike, okay, all right, I appreciate that. So, then let's, I guess, let's just say, so, so one of them is to fit up and set up seven portables needed at various schools. Could you just not fund that and fund the teachers instead?
These are the priorities that the board has adopted as part of what needs to be done for FY16. And again, boy, it's, as you can guess, if you look at that list, there's a lot of unfunded items on there, 5.3 million. So, if you look at, this is what the board has decided and approved on page 61. These are the priority funded requests.
I've got an extra budget book.
I've got an extra one amended, yeah.
Should have brought it up.
I'm sorry, I thought we.
No, no, no.
I apologize.
No printing costs.
I do have a couple more.
Where is that here? Where is that?
I do have a couple more.
Is that on page 61?
To some extent, anyway.
Anybody else need one?
I got, I got one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, on page 61, we are, the board did adopt and submit in the amended budget the following requests that are for approval for 16, and they include park testing associated items, literacy initiatives, which include two read intervention teachers, and then ESOL, that's English as a Second Language, two ESOL teachers. So, this budget does include four new teacher staffs, yes, sir.
But then, the portables come before the three, the number 34, so, so the portables were higher priorities than the three, I believe, you're gonna get.
Because we've got to have space to put a lot of these positions.
Well, we originally started, all of these things were on our new request, and we identified our priorities being park literacy and ESOL, and so we pared it down, so we wanted you to see what had been requested by the schools, and we pared it down to the small.
Yeah, no, yeah, it was just very useful to have.
We wanted the employees to understand that when we hire people, then their benefits and the extensive costs of personnel increase the cost. When you hire a portable, or when you buy a portable as a one-time expense, then there's no additional year-to-year cost, no outside costs other than salary, health insurance, and so on. So, that's why the people were moved, and the one-time request is for the portables, because that doesn't continue the cost year-to-year.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, but I guess you're looking at, if you've got the extra $800,000, you would hire more teachers, which would have the continuing cost year-to-year. So, I mean, so, I mean, so we're talking, we're talking about one-time funding for portables, but what we're really talking about is funding for teachers, because you're gonna, you know, money's fungible, you're gonna move, so that's.
But one of those stays on the budget.
Yep.
So, that money would do that ongoing funding for the teachers.
As long as, as long as they stay.
What do they say?
Yeah. But we have no control.
No, no, that's right. I, if, if no one has any other questions, I was wondering if anybody would like to go through the MOE calculation that's on page 56, because as you know, two years ago, state law changed relative to the means of effort calculation, and it is, has become a very complicated, complicated calculation, and we went through it with Mr. Culver and his staff, and they found it helpful, so I thought maybe I'd offer that if, sure, if you'd like for me to do that.
I don't know if you want to back up to page 36, so you can start with those categories, because that might help.
Okay, that could, that's, that's a good idea.
36.
Page 36.
And then 56.
Okay, the Board of Education has several funds that it manages, governmental funds, proprietary funds, and fiduciary funds, very similar to what the county government has in terms of funds and management of those dollars that are allocated to those funds. What we'd like to focus on today is the Consolidated Current Expense Fund, specifically the General Fund, which is the unrestricted portion of the consolidated current expense that is identified by the state, because that's where the county appropriation is accounted for within the general, in our general fund. And again, as you may know, we have to report to the state within the 15 categories that are established by law, and you see those 15 categories listed there, starting with administration running all the way through to capital outlay. And then, within those 15 categories, we have to report all expenditures by the six objects, salaries and wages, contracted services, supplies, materials, and so forth. So, within each one of those categories, those objects are the detail that make up the expenditures for those categories. So, if you look at page 52, right in the middle of the page, you'll see those expenditures listed by the 15 categories, and what the proposed budget is for 1516. And then the total general fund unrestricted budget proposed is 177, 377, 424. So, that's how that works, that's how we have to report it to the state. And again, as was mentioned last night by Mr. Kramer, those categories once set and established and approved, we cannot move funds between categories without county council approval. That's the significance of that whole process, and that's what's established in law.
And then below it is by the objects, so all of those are coming out through the objects.
Does that transfer, if you come in for us to do?